Will the meeting come to an end, please? This is an advertised public hearing on ordinance 2012-12-1, an ordinance amending Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Crawfordville, Georgia to define the term kennel and to provide for search uses to repeal any laws in conflict and to establish effective date. The effect of this ordinance, if adopted, is to remove any limitation on the number of animals permitted on a small lot. The public hearing on ordinance 2012-12-1 is now open. Thank you all.
Do we know if the other council members are coming?
They are. One of them is reportedly en route, and I don't know that the other one.
What do you guys talking about? Did she call me? What you have before you is a list of the ordinances already on the books not pertaining to the kennel ordinance at all, which control animals that are causing a problem. We've been talking about changing this definition of kennel for about ten months now, and I think one of the concerns that I've heard expressed by some of the city council members at meetings was that if we don't have this kennel ordinance in effect, how do we deal with somebody that has a whole bunch of animals that are causing problems for their neighbors? I think you can see, this is directly from the Crawfordville Code of Ordinances. I believe you can see that we have ample ordinances. If someone has animals, whether it's two animals or ten animals, that are causing a problem for their neighbors, there are plenty of ordinances to deal with that. They're not allowed to let their dog run loose. They're not allowed to have animals that don't have up-to-date rabies. They've got to keep their yards clean and odor-free. They have, they've got to make sure they don't bark all the time and keep the neighbors upset. There's lots of ordinances already on the books. If someone moves into town with animals, there are plenty of ordinances already in existence to deal with that problem. When you make a number, an arbitrary number of four, you make lawbreakers out of perfectly responsible animal owners. You may have someone that has ten animals, takes good care of them, they never bother the neighbors, their yard's clean and sanitary. Why would we want to penalize somebody who is responsible and caring with their animals? This would be the equivalent of if Mark Richards sent his deputies out and said, "If you have a car that'll go over seventy miles an hour, we're going to go ahead and give you a ticket because you might cause a problem, you might speed it sometime." All of our laws are based on people's bad behavior. Someone behaves badly, there's laws to punish them for that. Having an arbitrary number of four, you're saying someone's a lawbreaker when they are being a responsible, caring pet owner. Just as it would be unfair for you to get a ticket because you have the capacity to go over seventy, and that's the speed limit, the existing kennel definition is saying, "Because you might be a problem in the future, we're going to go ahead and call you a lawbreaker and cite you and punish you." That's just wrong. That goes against everything we know about what's fair and just in our society. I strongly urge the city council and the mayor to change this definition as you have before you to match the state definition. We've had as many as over a hundred and sixty people sign a petition, a second petition, some new people, over a hundred. The citizens of Crawfordville don't want this definition as it currently exists. We have done everything we can to get public opinion, to find out what the people want. It's not just a few crazy animal people. There's a lot of folks that don't, that don't want the definition the way it is now, and I urge you strongly to change it to the new definition which you will vote on tonight. Thank you.
Continuing the public hearing.
My name is Dorsey Token. I'd like to address the mayor of the city council on this ordinance we got proposed. The planning commission in the last five months has met twice on this, and each time they voted two to one. Let's change it to the state's definition. I appreciate it if you'll go along with what we have done. Thank you.
From Kay Stewart, 108 Monroe Street. I've never come up here and stood before you before, but tonight I really felt the right need to do so, and I'm listening. Please just change this definition to match the state definition. It's myriad of data. There's so many ordinances that can handle problems, and I just dream of the day when we can all sit down together and peacefully work out the needs for the animals that we didn't abuse, but they're here, and we're just trying to help the animals that other people have abused and broken these other ones. So, I ask you, please change this definition to match the state, and I thank you so much for your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Continuing the public hearing.
I went online today and just wanted to look at the history of the state definition of kennel that's on the books. This definition was implemented in 1986. So, in about four months, this state definition has been on the books in Georgia for twenty-seven years. This definition has controlled any, basically has controlled the counties in Georgia and Crawfordville included prior to the enactment of this latest definition that we have of kennel. And there's not one reported case of that statute being carried up as to any kind of issues revolving that statute. I put those statute numbers into the Westlaw, and there's not one single case. And so, what that tells me is, is that this definition has worked very well for twenty-seven years for a lot of people, including Crawfordville. Prior to the enactment of this latest definition, the clerk was handing out the state definition as part of the code for Crawfordville, which included the state definition. And here, the reason there've been these people that have been trying to get this thing changed is none of us wants to live in fear of having to go through big problems. We all, we all have things that we like to do. You know, some people like to, you know, coach the Little League ball team. Some people like to, you know, cook meals for people when they're sick. And in that case, if you were one of those people that like to do those kinds of things, you would not want a government entity to come in and tell you, "Okay, you can't do that anymore because if you want to be a coach of a Little League team, you've got to be certified, or if you want to cook a meal for somebody who's sick, you're going to have to have your kitchen inspected." And so, we just don't want those kinds of intrusions into things that, that we are doing because we enjoy them, we get a lot of satisfaction of them, out of them. And in this, in this case, you've got many members of the community here who are doing good work to help the community by fostering some of these pets, and, and as a result, they've, they've now come into the violation of what the code section is now. So, you've got these people who are living in fear, and you can look at and see the efforts that they've made to come out from under this, this cloud of fear that they have about being prosecuted. So, you know, that's, that's a big deal in terms of your neighbors, is, is just trying to get things back to some equilibrium where you're not going to have that happening anymore where we can get back. As Mary pointed out, we've got a lot of statutes here or ordinances here to deal with problems. This kennel definition, it's, it's a problem on two fronts. Number one, as we, as Mary said in the past, kennel normally denotes something for compensation, and that's exactly what the state definition does, is it takes it back into that category The one thing that I would say, you know, I, I kind of came to Mary's defense when she was going through this process of being prosecuted under the ordinance. I jumped in there and I tried to do what I could, and the, the city eventually decided that they didn't want to prosecute her, and then the ordinance was changed. The one thing, and, and the people that know me know that I don't want the people in Crawfordville to ever be overpowered by something that they don't feel empowered to, to fight against. In this situation, you've got these people that are adopting these pets, and we don't have any cases against anybody. We haven't had any cases against anybody but Mary Jones. And so, you've got a situation where we have not had a problem in the past of people, you know, being a big problem, and the one case that we had was dead-docking. And so, all we're trying to do by getting this kennel definition put into place that the state has is to come in conformity with everybody else around the state, and it's, it's taking these people out from under the fear that they're living under of being prosecuted. The one thing I can say is that I have committed to these folks, and, and hopefully you guys will fix this problem tonight, and we won't have to deal with this anymore, but, you know, I have committed to help anybody that's prosecuted under the current definition of kennel. And, you know, I don't have any choice ethically. I couldn't look myself in the mirror if I stepped away from, from what I've committed to do. I did the same thing in the landfill situation. I jumped in, I did everything I could in that situation, and it's the same with these people. These people are fighting because they love animals. I mean, just imagine, the old mother in the shoe with so many kids, you didn't know what to do. You've got all these kids running around out in the yard, and if somebody all of a sudden says, "Okay, you know, you may have eighteen foster kids, but you're not allowed more than four," you know? And so, we're not, you know, exactly talking about the same thing, but we're talking about a situation to where we just need to think about, we don't have a big problem, and we need to put this thing back so these people aren't there anymore. And I just ask you to please think about that before you go tonight.
Continuing the public hearing. Anyone else?
Can I tell you a little story? I promised I'll keep it short.
If it's not on topic, not at this time, though.
If it's not what?
If it's, if it addresses...
It's on the topic.
Okay. If it's on topic, yes.
Okay. I went down to Warner Robbins yesterday, Bob and I did, and spent the day with our son. And he came into the kitchen while we were talking and asked us, they said, "Todd wanted to know what had happened in Crawfordville." And I said, "What are you talking about, son?" And he said, "Remember, I've been going up there since I was fifteen and hunting, during hunting season." And he says, "And the dogs were so bad that we even had to hang our deer up real high so they couldn't, wouldn't pull them off the rack when we killed one." And he said, and Barry and I were talking about it the other day, that there was not dogs all over the place during Christmas when we were up there. They came and spent four days at Christmas with me. And he said, "Mom, what happened?" And I told him about these people that are taking the dogs and sheltering them and this kind of stuff, and that other people disagreed with it. And he said, "Why would they do that when it's cleaned up the town and you don't have those dogs roaming all over town?" So, he said, "Why would they object to that?" So, that's my question tonight. Why would somebody object when we're helping clean up the town, keeping animals off the street, and the whole nine yards?
Anyone else wish to speak at this public hearing? Public hearing is closed. Council meeting will be at 7:00 PM. This procedure is finished. Welcome everyone to the February meeting of the Crawfordville City Council. Let's rise to the flag. Would the clerk read the minutes of the January 8th city council meeting, please?
Mayor Milner opened the meeting, welcoming everyone, and asked all to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. Members present were Ms. Jethlyn Chapman, Vice Mayor Bobby Chapman, Mr. Leary Bowman, and Ms. Vivian Stewart. Yes, the clerk to read the minutes for a reading of the December 4th, 2012 council meeting. After the reading, the mayor requested two corrections are made to the minutes. He asked for motion to approve minutes with corrections made. Ms. Bowman made a motion to approve with corrections and was seconded by Ms. Chapman. He asked that all who agreed to signify by saying aye. All agreed, and the motion carried. Mayor Milner asked for a reading of the December 31st, 2012 special call meeting. After the reading of the minutes, the mayor asked if there were any corrections or additions to the minutes. There were none, and he gave a motion to approve as read. Ms. Chapman made the motion to approve as read and was seconded by Ms. Chapman. Ms. Stewart, all members of the council approved the motion, and the motion carried. Ms. Kendall Richards thanked the city for responding to her request to claim property between Commerce Street and Highway 278. Mayor Milner stated the whale house on Commerce Street is completely weathered in. There is interior work that still needs to be done. The work is moving along very nicely. The representative from Fortis Hills, our contractor for the sewer rehabilitation, has promised they will be back in the city to identify any problem that has been created as a result of the recent rains. He edited U1 on Commerce Street but was not aware of more. There is a problem on Union Place that had been there for several years where a sewer trench was sinking. We had patched it previously, but it continued to sink. He asked fortis, while they were in town, to video the interior of the sewer line. The video showed the line was in excellent condition, and it, it appeared because of the sinking, because of the failure to compact the dirt above the sewer line when it was placed. Today, I asked Copeland Underground Construction to remove the pavement and saw it to a lower level and then compact it and rebuilding it up to the proper level. Hopefully, we will not have the same problem again. The mayor spoke of the lot that was claimed, stating the lot doesn't look all that good. The lot next door doesn't look all that good either, but it doesn't have the lighter color material that stands out so much. Mayor Milner asked for a report from the planning commission. The sharing of spoke, stating they met January 3rd, 2013, with members Mr. Larry Stewart and Mr. Dorsey Prezett. The board recommended approving ordinance 2012-12-1 with a vote of two to one with Mr. Cooper and Mr. Stewart approving, and Ms. Young voted not to approve. Mayor Milner stated that the ordinance will be placed on the agenda for the next council meeting. It will be advertised for public hearing at 6:30 preceding the regular meeting. Mayor Milner stated the financial report was for November 12th. It is based on the budget we adopted December 31st, 2012. It shows our income exceeds our expectations through November. Our expenses have overrun small amount. Overall, the city is in good condition. That completes the agenda, as there is no old or new business to discuss. There will be a special council meeting tomorrow night to interview applicants for the police job beginning at 6:00 PM. There was no further business to discuss. Mayor Milner adjourned the meeting.
Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? I have a motion to approve.
A motion? A motion, let me approve the minutes.
Motion by Ms. Rowan.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Stewart. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Would the clerk call, read the minutes of the special call meeting of January 9th, 2013?
Mayor Milner opened the meeting and welcomed everyone. He asked all to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. Members present were Mr. Leary Bowman, Ms. Vivian Stewart, and Vice Mayor Bobby Chapman. The mayor stated the reason for this meeting was to interview two applicants for the position of chief of police. He introduced the first applicant. He asked Mr. Gibson, who had recently retired from the Department of Juvenile Justice, to give the council members a verbal recap of his background. The mayor and council member questioned him to find information they needed to know. When asked what he would need in salary, Mr. Gibson responded with a math between twenty-six and twenty-eight thousand dollars. He was also told he would not be provided a car to drive home, and there were no benefits with exception of vacation pay. The mayor introduced, then introduced the next applicant, Mr. Simpson. He was asked to give a summary of his experience. The mayor and council members then had the opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Simpson. Mayor Milner then told him he would not be provided with a car to take home. When asked the salary he would need, he stated he would need thirty-two thousand dollars to cover his personal financial responsibilities. There were no further questions, but he did the applicants, and the mayor asked for a motion to enter into a closed session. Ms. Stewart made a motion to enter into a close executive session and was seconded by Ms. Bowman. The mayor asked all who agreed to signify by saying aye. All were in agreement, and the motion carried unanimously. The mayor and council entered closed session. At the end of the closed session, the mayor asked for a motion to return from the executive session. Ms. Bowman made a motion to return from the executive session and was seconded by Ms. Stewart. Mayor Milner asked all who agreed to signify by saying aye. All agreed, and the motion carried unanimously. Mayor Milner stated the council was back on record. He asked if council would like to make a motion. Ms. Stewart made a motion that council would like to ask Grady Gibson accept their offer to be chief at the rate of twenty-five thousand per year. The mayor stated it was a probationary period for the first six months. The motion was seconded by Ms. Bowman. Mayor asked all that agreed to signify by saying aye. All agreed, and the motion carried. The mayor gave the oath to Mr. Gibson, swearing him in as chief of police so he could start the next day. There being no further business to discuss, Mayor Milner closed the meeting. Adjourned the meeting.
Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? I have a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Stewart. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like aye? The minutes are approved. Mayor's report. The new chief of police has interviewed the, Mr. Scott Swain, who was the former auxiliary police officer, who spent a short time with us before resigning, and asked him to come back with the city. He would work about eight hours per month at absolutely no cost to the city. Since you agreed to use his services in the past, I don't anticipate that any of you have a problem with him returning. Do you? I kind of consent now. The Community Development Block grant and the EPA grant projects, both ought to be completed. There will be a public hearing on February 12th, 11:00 AM here in City Hall. Representatives from the Department of Communications, Community Affairs will be here, along with representatives of the contract and our grant administrators and our engineers. So, you're welcome to be present as well. The ad has been, has appeared in the advocate, and there's one posted on the door. There's a lot of business, financial reports. You have before you the general fund, revenue and expense budget for previous fiscal year through December. It shows that our income slightly overran the budget by a hundred, a hundred and one percent, and that our total expenses were basically right on the nose. They underran by two hundred dollars. So, overall, we're right in the budget parameters. Broken down, page one, following is the cost of general government. And there the expenses did slightly overrun budget, but only two hundred and forty-eight dollars. The judicial, page two, also slightly overran the budget by two hundred dollars. Public safety, expended to us underran the budget by some two hundred and eighty dollars. Public works, expenses underran the budget by four hundred and sixty dollars. And cultural recreation, this is basically is funding for the library. The expended to us underran the budget by two hundred and twenty-three dollars. The balance sheet is the next, and it shows you the funds that we have available at this point to meet our obligations, and I say no cause for concern. point to meet our obligations, and I see no cause for concern. At page two of the balance sheet is the expense budget, revenue and expense budget for water and sewer fund. Our total income overran by two hundred and seventy dollars. Our total expenses underran by sixteen thousand dollars, and that is because we had the financing for the wellhouse in there, and the bills had not come in for the work that the county did. And of course, they did not complete the wellhouse in the last fiscal year, mostly final work has been done, was done during the month of January. We will have to do some budget adjustments with the current year's budget to account for the fact that these costs were overran into this year. But other than the expenses associated with the wellhouse construction, the other expenses were in good shape. The next page is the solid waste budget. The revenues, basically exactly as expected. The expenses required an infusion of funds from the general fund to balance. We essentially came out as expected. Balance sheet, those are the funds on deposit. You notice that the funds that are in the, in the grant accounts, they are not accessible laid on for use for the purpose of me of paying the bills under the grants. And those are grant funds that have not been yet approved or withdrawn to meet the approved Are there any questions concerning financial statements? Moving on to old business. Council members, you have before you the subject of this meeting's earlier public Ordinance twenty-twelve dash twelve dash one, an ordinance amending A, appendix A zoning of code of ordinances of the city of Craperville, Georgia, to define the term kennel and to provide for such uses, to repeal interlaws in conflict therewith, and to establish an effective date. Do I hear a motion to adopt?
My motion that we adopt ordinance twenty-twelve dash twelve one.
Motion by Ms. Chapman, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Bowman. Discussion on the ordinance.
I have a question. For the kennel term, the amount of animals that'd be in that kennel, is it a certain number?
No.
It'll just be out there?
It can be any number.
But we don't have a great number of them now.
Any other discussion?
One more question.
Yes.
Can I ask Ms. Jones a question? Would it be proper to ask Ms. Jones a question? No?
Uh, possibly, yes.
Okay, possibly. Just a general number of how many animals would you have at one given time?
Well, my Department of Agriculture license says that I cannot have more than forty animals at any of my locations, so I've got animals in four locations right now. No, but I don't have forty right now.
Any further discussion? If I roll on the motion to adopt.
Ms. Chapman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Stewart, how do you vote?
Question was welcome. Before the questions tonight, I'm sorry. If we want to change the term of kennel to reduce the amount of dogs, but let it be more than what they have, can we do that or send it back?
You can do that in a different ordinance, yes, but you cannot do that in this ordinance.
And what ordinance would that be in?
It would have to be in either drafted ordinance, and you would have to come up with a number.
Okay.
And it could be drafted at your request.
Ms. Bowman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman, how do you vote?
No.
Mayor, how do you vote?
The motion failed. Two to three.
Was there any surprise there?
You ought to be ashamed of yourself of those who voted against it. You ought to be ashamed. Can I have a, ask to have a newborn, dress with a number?
You may.
Okay, I want a newborn, dress, so I can put the number.
Would you like to point on what that number is?
I would.
Decide what the number is. It should be in the ordinance.
Okay.
It wouldn't go in public address.
Okay.
But if it really was introduced, it should go.
Okay. Does we need the number tonight? We need the number tonight?
No.
So what did y'all just pay?
We'll leave that number before we get to the other.
Let's go ahead.
Mayor, can there be some explanation? I don't mean to speak out of place, but I think she was thinking that this was on Mary's property, and that had already passed. This was not at all about Mary's property. This is about everybody else in the city, not at all about Mary's property.
Yeah, I just wanna, instead of doing the whole forty, end it, I just wanna have another number.
But it has nothing to do with her property.
It's everybody else.
It's everybody else.
It's not just dogs, it's any kind of animal.
It's the entire town. It's not just a few people, it's everybody.
I know. If, I'm just saying through the Department of Agriculture, the description of kennel will be forty.
But then, no, no, that's not true. You were voting on that at all.
We add, we weren't on the term kennel being added to the.
No.
No.
If I could, if I could.
This is a discussion for elsewhere. This issue is concluded for this evening.
I really think she misunderstood it. I don't think she understood what she was voting on.
You can explain to her.
Where is she in all this?
Later.
For ten months, we've been explaining this. Now, how long does it take for people to understand what's going on? Longer than ten months, please?
Wait, wait, just a minute. Can we just take the vote as if you understood this or not, or could you please tell us what you think you voted on?
Yeah, I know I voted on this section one point five.
I don't understand.
We don't have that paper, we don't know what that section is.
What is that?
The, the section one point five, the definition is, replace the current definition of the term kennel with the following language, as established other than an animal shelter, where dogs and cats are maintained for boarding, holding, training, or single purposes for a fee or compensation.
I'm, I'm standing with you.
So I, the ordinance about, the Humane Society's already been passed, this was about everybody else in town being able to have more than four animals, that's all it was about.
I know.
Okay.
But you're gonna dictate how many animals we can have, about four?
She just did. Any kind of animal.
Any kind of animal, two birds, two cats.
We are all breaking the law, is that what you're saying, Pat? We're all breaking the law. All of us in here have over four, so we're breaking the law. Yeah, that's what you're saying.
Well, you are, you voted.
That's what I'm saying.
Do you have any pets?
I don't.
It's saying if my neighbor wants to come down here and complain that I have more than four animals, they can do so.
This is over.
You want it to be over. You deserve what you get. Well, I shouldn't, I can say what I want to say. I'm free to me, I can say what I want to damn say.
What did y'all just say?
The ordinance, what you feed, method.
No.
It does to animals if it, get it, um, get a couple of them.
So if I've got three acres, I can have how many animals per acre? I don't know the same way, but.
The legislation is only one acre, all that. It's for close, it's for neighborhoods where the homes are close to each other.
They're all close together. So I don't understand, are, are you going to be able to say how many animals we can have, so like say if we have two, two cats and two dogs, we're, and we decide to bring another cat or a dog in, then we're, we're all those, or what? I don't understand what, I mean, baby, I don't understand. Is that what's gonna happen? You're gonna be able to tell us how many animals, cats and dogs and things we can have?
No, it's up to an acre of land, you can have as many as you want.
Well, then why is it?
What are we up here fussing about then? That's what started it all, somebody complained.
Well, see, we don't understand. You, you just said we have an acre, we can have any animals we want, but that isn't.
Well, she knows that most people here do not have an acre of land on their front, by your town. She knows that, see? So she's using that.
I don't understand this, Miss Stewart, it's on it, maybe it's.
Oh, I understand it.
All I have is, you know, cats and dogs.
You know, it seems the whole, whole situation is here that there was a petition made up with a hundred and twenty-something people.
There was allegedly a petition. The petition has never been presented to the city council.
The people voted on this thing, and, and you people don't care.
Allegedly.
You people don't care what the people want.
I don't understand.
All you had to do was ask how many animals.
You want me to go get it? As long as you're taking care of my little three. I just spent seventy-two dollars to get my cat. That's a lot of money. But now I need to go out and get one of the kittens. I don't understand.
Moving on.
Council knows where a cat house, so my cats wouldn't roam the street at night.
Move to new business. Introduction of ordinances. Ordinance twenty thirteen dash two dash one, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Craperville, Georgia, to establish the offense of disorderly conduct and administration of same, to repeal all ordinances in conflict with same, to establish effective date, and for other purposes. The sheriff recently discovered there is not a city ordinance prohibiting disorderly conduct where it could be tried in municipal court. There is a state ordinance prohibiting disorderly conduct, but this would mean that any charges would have to go to the circuit court. So this is being proposed at the sheriff's request, so that charges within the city can be tried locally in municipal court. Would anybody like to sponsor that one?
I'll sponsor.
Who is that? Next item on the agenda. Introduction, is ordinance twenty thirteen dash two dash two, an ordinance amending section two point two of the code of ordinances of the city of Craperville, to repeal all ordinances in conflict with same, to establish effective date, and for other purposes. This affects the order of business at our regular public meetings. The code as written requires the reading of the minutes. I don't know of any other meeting where the minutes have to be read at each meeting. The effect if this ordinance were adopted is that minutes of the previous meeting would no longer have to be read by the clerk at this meeting. The other change that this proposes is to use the language that we have been using since Ms. Lois's term, public requests. The, the language in the ordinance says citizen grievances. I think public request is a little, a little broader and a little more friendly. Those two changes would take effect if this ordinance were adopted. Would anyone give sponsor this ordinance?
I'll sponsor.
Ms. Chapman? Ms. Chapman. And the next item is resolution Whereas resolution 2012-002 authorized the contribution of three thousand dollars to provide additional electrical service in Alexander H. Stevens Park. And whereas the transfer of these funds to the Tolliver County Economic Development Authority was delayed pending state approval of the project. And whereas documentation required by the state for final approval is nearing completion and will be submitted shortly. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council continue to support this effort and will contribute three thousand dollars toward financing this undertaking. And whereas the city council previously sold the natural gas distribution system it owned and purchased a certificate of deposit with a portion of the proceeds from the sale. And whereas the use of the funds from the sale of the natural gas distribution are not limited in any way by revenue bond covenants. Be it further resolved, the funds required, three thousand dollars for the increased general government expenditure shall be obtained from the utility reserve seated in the 2013 fiscal year budget is hereby amended to reflect this change. Basically, this is a resolution that moves the money that you approved last year which we didn't transfer because the state had not yet authorized that project to go ahead over into the C.R.G. Same, it's the same funds, it's just occurred after January the first instead of before December the thirty-first of last year. Any questions? I have a motion to approve resolution 2013-001.
I'm hoping to approve resolution 2001-3-001.
Motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a-
Second.
Second by Ms. Bowman. Any further discussion? Call the vote, please.
Ms. Stewart, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Chapman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. That concludes the business on tonight's agenda.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask you a question before you adjourn?
Certainly.
Over on Park Street, down by the gym where the sewage work was done, they did not fill up that piece all the way across, still about that deep, will that eventually be filled up? Keep the bench up your bumper?
I was unaware that it hadn't been filled up, I suppose we'll come back and check, I'll-
They, they partly filled it, but they didn't fill it all the way up. And it's all the way across the road.
Down there near the gym?
Yeah, right across from the gym. Thank you.
Yep, you all right?
You're fine, thank you. How are you feeling?
I'm doing all right.
This meeting is very good.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor, I want to talk to you before you finish your book about him.
Oh, okay, great.
You know what I always told everybody? If it hadn't been for Mr. Juan Mendoza, I probably starved to death as a kid. Because, you know, daddy farmed in the farm in one-